Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the October 20th, 2021 Worcester Township Board of Supervisors Business Meeting. Would you please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? Good evening, folks. My name is Rick DeLello. I'm the Chairman of the Board. To my left is Lou Betts, who's our Vice Chair. To my right is Steve Quigley, who's our Third Member. We have Tommy Ryan, who's our Township Manager, and Stacy Crandell, who's our Assistant Township Manager on the back table. And on the front table is Nicole, I'll just say Q because I mispronounce her name every time, who's our Finance Director, and Bob Brant, who is our Township Solicitor. First and foremost, does anybody have any informational items for the Board tonight?
Yes. This evening's meeting is being video recorded for rebroadcast also prior to this evening's meeting. The Board did meet in executive session to discuss a matter of land acquisition in specific, considering a purchasing parcel east of Valley Forge Road. There is no decision on this item expected to be made at this evening's meeting. Also discussed in executive session, a second matter of land acquisition regarding the possible purchase of a parcel west of Valley Forge Road. Likewise, no decision is expected to be made on this matter this evening. And lastly, in executive session, the Board discussed a matter of litigation, in specific zoning hearing board application 21-10 RONCA, and a decision on this matter is expected to be made at this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Tommy. In terms of that, we can put that at the end of the agenda? Is that a fair place to put that? Or do you want to do it early?
My suggestion is you do it at the beginning of the agenda.
Okay.
But because of the revisions to the open space... Oh, excuse me, open space. I've got open space.
Public hearing item? Maybe do it right after that? Is that fair?
Well, now you...
Or before?
Let's do it after the public hearing.
Okay.
There needs to be a motion to add to the agenda the potential action on the zoning hearing board matter 21-10. That needs to be a motion to add that to the agenda, a second and a vote on that.
So do we do that before public comment or now?
Do it right now.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion that we add an agenda item to tonight's agenda. What are the mechanics that I got to say on that, Tommy or Bob?
It would be a motion to add consideration of zoning hearing board application 21-10 RONCA, R-O-N-C-A, added to the agenda to consider that matter.
So I'd like to make a motion based on our solicitor's recommendation as articulated, if that's fair.
You're doing a great job. I'll second that motion.
All right. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor of adding an agenda item for that particular item? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay. Next item on our agenda is public comment. We do ask that you limit your public comment to five minutes. Does anybody have any public comment for the Board this evening? Sir? And the Chair? Just sign your name, tell us who you are, and the floor is yours.
Cameron Barrett, Methacton Avenue. Here to talk about a fine I received in the mail for open burning from the Township Fire Marshal, Dave Cornish. I feel like it's a personal vendetta against me. I spent 10 years with Worcester Fire Department in good standings. I left there and I'm now an active fireman with Lower Province Township. I've been a fireman for 14 years, very qualified and certified. He came out to my residence on October 13th and upon a complaint, not a 911 call. And I'll just hit some key things he had wrote on this and said there, although small and not generating a lot of smoke, it was enough to generate a complaint from a nearby resident. Just because I have a neighbor that doesn't like me doesn't make it illegal. So again, as we briefly discussed, the township does allow recreational burn, burning. The burning of debris such as a tree stump, limbs, et cetera, does not, in my opinion, qualify as recreational burn. So what are we supposed to burn? The little logs from acme? I mean, that's, to me, I think tree stumps, logs, sticks is what we're supposed to. That being said, I know that the, he put a note on here that Worcester Township Ordinance 2021-286, which I have here, says that fire pits, fire bowls, and chimneys may be used without Fire Marshal approval. So again, is it his opinion as to what the definition of a fire pit is? Because I have a dugout area, I've been burning there for two years. I took a beautiful house and, or the eyesore of my road and turned it into a beautiful house trying to live in Worcester. That being said, why I think it's a personal vendetta, I also have proof via 911 calls that somebody called from .6 miles away on another resident that the same Fire Marshal was at that party. I don't want to name it, I don't want to bring it up because I think he was in his rights too, but he's going to say that I was having a fire, a little fire, and he's going to give me a fine, but somebody that's having a 30 or 40-foot flame fire because he's at the party, he doesn't get a, he doesn't get a fine? So I already put a right to know in for his credentials because I believe he is not certified to be a Fire Marshal in this township. Again, basics, if you just look around the area, our Fire Marshal, East Art and Township Fire Marshal, Town Men's and, they require Fire Inspector 1 and 2, 1 and 2 family dwelling inspectors, building construction, and pro-board code enforcement, all of which I know he does not have. But I did a right to know and I plan on following through with this, but I'm asking the Board to have this fine dropped via the Fire Marshal because I think it's malicious and I don't think it's, I don't think it's even legal. And again, an opinion, he's writing an opinion. Is it factual? Is it the law? Is he, what's he, what's he going off of? Because he writes nothing in here, he just writes the Township Ordinance and the Township Ordinance says I can have a fire. So I just kind of want to get an answer as to who this guy is. I think it's a personal vendetta. He knows who I am, I know who he is. But why, why am I getting a fine? Because I'm going to do a right to know to figure out who else he's firing in township. I don't think it's going to be more than one or two people.
Okay. So what I can tell you is a couple of things. First and foremost, I don't know the exact criteria he uses to make some of those determinations. I know that we recently made some changes to, to the ordinance regarding, and some of the definitions. Bob, I don't know if you can speak to some of that, but we made some changes on the open burning specifically.
I just read the exact change you made.
So there's, there's certainly some discretion with the Fire Marshal. If there's a fine involved, I don't, typically as a Board, we won't say tonight, no, you don't need to pay it, or yes, you need to. We don't have the mechanics to say that. We certainly don't have all the facts to say that. Ultimately, we would need to gather a little more information from our side. Certainly, we, from a policy perspective, we certainly make every effort to be consistent in terms of how we do that. Open burning is certainly one of those unique elements that if we head to different parts of the township, people interpret that differently. So we want to make sure that we're trying to be consistent in where we're making that determination. We certainly make every effort not to say, well, you know, we don't like you, or the way you've chosen to do your pits, so we're going to fine you, versus the next neighbor not. We try to stay out of that ultimately because every scenario certainly has different characteristics. So what I can say is certainly we can look into that to find out what latitude exists or doesn't, and make sure we understand what took place and what determination was made so that we can either say, yes, we support the document that was sent to you, or if we feel that we need to make some adjustment there. Does that, from Board members, does that sound reasonable? Or do you guys have other thoughts, questions, ideas?
Yeah. I missed something you said about the other call with a, you checked out where it came from, 26 miles or whatever? Back in the...
.6 miles, about 1,000 yards.
Okay.
It was a 911 call. Somebody called 911 on a resident and the Fire Department was dispatched and it was immediately recalled. And that Fire Marshal was at that exact same party and there was no fine or permit.
So you're saying that they had a 911 call, the Fire Marshal was at the party where the fire was?
Yep.
And had a flame 20 feet high in the air?
30, 40 feet.
34 feet. Okay. Yeah, I think we have to look at it. We won't make a decision tonight, but something I will promise you, I think...
And I plan on following through more with, because I already...
Right, I understand. We have to look into it, but we will have a quick turnaround. We'll have an answer by next month. The manager will get in touch with you. It'll be rectified by, within the month. You know, after we look at, we just...
Just to make sure you've got your name and everything spelled correctly for our public record, that would be helpful.
Good?
You're good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any other public comment for the Board tonight? Seeing none, we'll move forward. The first item is we have, under our official action items, guys, we have the consent agenda, as we have every month. Ultimately, let me start by asking if anybody has any items they wish to remove from our consent agenda tonight?
Do not.
Okay. So ultimately, what I'd be looking for is a motion to approve a consent agenda that is going to include the following items. It's, you know, the Treasurers Report and other monthly reports for September 2021, bill payments for September 2021, the September 15th, 2021 work session minutes, and the September 15th, 2021 business meeting minutes, and the October 7th, 2021 special meeting minutes. In terms of the payments of the bills for September 2021, the amount is going to be
Excuse me. Mr. Chairman, can you just inform the public about, we don't usually have many special meetings, what took place on the October 7th? So they know what we're voting on?
Fair enough, Steve. So we had a special meeting on October 7th in order to approve a clause for financing of the Fire Department's new piece of equipment. We had to validate their status as a nonprofit in order for them to receive a discount on the financing of that piece of equipment. And then additionally, we voted to ensure the additional dollars went back to the Fire Department as opposed to coming anywhere else based on the changes we made in the financing. So that was a special meeting. We had to do that. Based on the mechanics, they couldn't wait for our meeting tonight in order for us to get all those pieces in place. And obviously, as we've said in many meetings, we want to make sure we're doing everything we can to support the Fire Department. This was an opportunity to do that and also, the sum of money was about 40,000 or 50,000 that we were able to then get. Ultimately, we'll go back to the Fire Department. So that was the October 7th special meeting, and then we obviously have meeting minutes that are associated with that.
Thank you, thank you, Rick. I think you explained it very well what we did. So, okay.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda, Treasury Report, bill payment, September 21, the minutes for September 21, business meeting minutes, and the special meeting on October 7th.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next up, we have the public hearing, and I'm going to hand that over to Bob, who will take us through the mechanics of the public hearing.
Happy to. Thank you. Folks, this evening, there's a advertised public hearing on the consideration of Ordinance 2021-287, which amends various provisions of the Township Code. I'm going to refer to Tommy to go over the details of it, but essentially, this is called a cleanup ordinance, for lack of parlance, and it corrects some mistakes and some, adds some things to the ordinance to clarify it, rather than create five ordinance as we do it in one cleanup ordinance. Let's let the record reflect that the following exhibits are, are part of the record. The legal ad was sent to the Times Herald on 9/3/21. The ordinance was sent to Montgomery County Planning Commission, Worcester Township Planning Commission on 9/14/21. It was placed in the lobby on that date, posted to the website on that date. The legal ad was published on September 24, 2021, and again, on October 1st, 2021, and we have the proof of publication and tonight's the hearing. So I'm going to open the hearing and ask Tommy Ryan to very briefly describe what the cleanup ordinance does in this case.
The changes to code are very modest. The name of a township road has been misspelled, that will be corrected. Building height, density, and the application of TDR in the multifamily residential district will be clarified. The typographical error regarding certain lot sizes corrected, and an obsolete approvals provision will be deleted.
In addition, there's some TDR information. All right, so that's the nature of the revisions, proposed revisions by ordinance. Since it's a public hearing, is there any public comment or testimony on the proposed revisions? Let the record reflect there none. Does the Board members, do the Board members have any questions?
No, Bob, I don't have anything specific. It's, you know, we've done this a couple of times where there's just the process of cleaning up ordinances as you make changes over time, just to make sure that you're consistent across the ordinances, and that seems to be the case of what we're doing here.
Okay, so having no comment, let's close the public hearing. And now there would be a Board considerate emotion, consider a motion to adopt that ordinance which is identified as 2021-287. One other thing I want to make sure as part of the record, that the Montgomery County Planning Commission letter of October 12, 2021 supports the amendment. Someone needs to make a motion.
Thank you, Bob. Does somebody want to make a motion there?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 2021-287 as so described.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. So Tommy, you're free to go. And Bob, so... You'll sneak out. You won't be that noisy. And the next item is the new item. I don't know how we want to define that, but we'll take a minute. Go ahead.
Well, I think what you indicate that the, there is an application pending before the zoning hearing board for application 21-10 out of RONCA. The manager probably has the specifics.
Yep.
But essentially, it's a request for a variance to consider a structure that's already been improved as a home occupa...
In-law.
As a dwelling unit, as a separate dwelling unit. I'll let Tommy maybe give some more indication of that.
There's an application pending before the zoning hearing board. The applicant seeking a use variance or interpretation to allow two separate dwelling units on a property. Also, a special exception with regards to the approval for an in-law suite. The structure was built without permits, and the second dwelling is under construction at this time. So the recommendation to the Board of Supervisors would be to recommend the solicitor send correspondence to the zoning hearing board, deferring on the request for relief to the zoning hearing board's discretion, but recommending, should the zoning hearing board approve the application, certain conditions of approval.
So the Board's familiar, in many cases, you take no position. You've got a rather sophisticated zoning hearing board. They certainly have experienced and know the criteria. But what I would do, as I've done in the past, is write a letter to the zoning hearing board suggesting, if it's the Board's pleasure, that the Board takes no position on the application, but that would ask the zoning hearing board to apply the law to the criteria set forth in the MPC with regard to variances. And if in fact, the Board, the zoning Board decides to grant the application, there would be a number of conditions that we would suggest to the zoning hearing board that be applied to it.
Got you. So when we discussed this in executive session, certainly, there's, there was consensus across the Board in terms of authorizing you to do that. I think it was Steve who might have mentioned, but you know, one of the areas is, is, you know, how we make sure that we don't get in the way. We have a very sophisticated zoning hearing board, as you mentioned, but we have concern about here, certainly with what we've seen take place. Most concerning is the notion of two separate dwelling units, and then there's a transfer of ownership down the road, and how do we sort of follow that along? You know, you, you start with a good intention and then two owners from now, somebody's done something feigning ignorance or whatever the case may be, and we haven't really solved the problem of the matter that was before us. So I don't, you know, we trust your judgment certainly, but that's, that was raised in executive session. I think it's a valid concern to how to do that most appropriately without getting in the way.
One of the, one of the items in the letter could be to articulate that very concern that in the Board, considering the application itself, considering the fact that there's a very difficult, for lack of a better term, policing ability moving forward.
Right.
So I'll include that in the letter.
I think Mr. DeLlo covered most of the points, and I think it's, reiterate, the issue is, we really like to try to help, we're here to help township residents when we can with the in-law suite, but I think the issue with this is somewhere, when it's a separate dwelling unit, what happens in the future? And I think we really have a, I think, a strong concern about that, that that be noted to the people involved in the program, that it's good right now and it's all good intentions, but as Mr. DeLlo said, what happens to buyers down the road becomes an issue that the township doesn't want to be faced with. So I think the letter would serve that purpose. So, okay, thank you.
I just think we follow Bob Brant's recommendations, let the zoning board do their job, and you follow up.
Someone needs to make a motion to authorize me to send a letter consistent with the discussion we just had.
So I make a motion to send Bob Brant, the Attorney, to zoning hearing board and issue a letter of concern.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion that's on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, so the next item on our agenda is the open space program. As we've talked about the last few months, we've been putting together sort of a framework for an open space program. I believe we have a couple of slides and a little presentation, Stacy, to sort of walk through some of the mechanics of what we've come up with and sort of where we're at, and then we'll have maybe a little discussion about that.
All right. Okay, well, good evening, everyone. As Rick has said, we've been talking about open space for a while. So open space is a priority in this township, and we recognize that, and the Board has recognized that. So we spent the last several months going over different options and what resources we have in order to kind of come up with some sort of a program to go forward with. I want to start out with this slide. It's a really, it shows that what we already have in Worcester as preserved land, we have over 1,800 square, 1,800 acres of preserved land currently, which is about 17 and a half percent of our total land in the township is preserved, permanently preserved. So that is a really good distinction. We're already in a really good spot for that. In addition, if you add in the agriculture security areas, which you can't say are permanently preserved, but that brings us to about a little over 27% of the total land in the township. So... So to talk a little bit about what the structure would be of this program, the responsibilities. So we'll start with the Board of Supervisors. The Board, as they have been and, and will be, they will prioritize the acquisitions, potential acquisitions, they'll approve the purchases, they will budget funds and to maintain these, the land. In addition, we're also looking to bring National Lands Trust onboard as an open space consultant that we would appoint, that would help guide us for, you know, best management practices on, on properties, helping us assess potential acquisitions, and if there's, you know, best match for funding sources as we look at different properties. With the Township Solicitor, Engineer, they would be obviously as needed. The Solicitor would be a part of a lot of the agreements. The Engineer would be there if we needed any, you know, any engineering and consulting on the properties. And as the Assistant Township Manager myself, I would, I would be the liaison to the property owners and the residents. I would help prepare our grant applications and direct the, I do all the communications for the township currently, and I would be the one responsible to get the word out and help the outreach on this program. And then we have our township residents and businesses, and as far as, part of this plan is to talk about the ability to have residents and businesses, they can donate to help, to help fund the open space acquisitions. So some of the goals is to purchase and permanently preserve 300 acres by 2033, which is the township's 300th anniversary. So we would have a campaign, the 300 by 300, and that we would kick off in spring of 2022. And this would increase the preserved land, permanent preserved land to 20% of the township's total land area. The other goal is to provide public access at properties, ease whenever possible, also to create sustainable areas that won't impose a financial or maintenance burden on the township, and also preserve properties that would also improve the community's waterways. The township, as you're aware, is under stormwater management mandates by the state, and this, you know, preserving certain areas would allow us to get some credits on our MS4 as well. So some ways to get involved, obviously, if anyone is interested in the possible donation or sale of a property to the township, you know, they can, they can approach the township and contact us, and we'll walk through the process. And then there also, once we get this all, this program, you know, kicked off, we'll have the ability for people to make private donations to the township in order to allow us to purchase more open space. So what is the next steps? We're going to be developing the program. We're doing that currently, working on some education outreach materials, and then in January, we'll be appointing the National Lands Trust as our open space consultant, and we're hoping to fully launch this program by spring of 2022. That's all I got. So if there's any questions?
Thank you. Thank you, Stacy. I think I'll probably reiterate a couple of things, but largely, we've been talking for some time about open space, and one of the things certainly that we thought was important to try to codify a little bit more, a structure around a program and a plan. There were some things that, at a high level, we were trying to do. One was, we really think this is, you know, at the end of the day, land acquisition is a Board responsibility, but there's a structure that we can put in place that helps, that helps residents find ways to participate, that has us sort of doing some of the legwork of education so we know where to go, where are the funding sources, where are the ways that we can look for grants, where are the ways that we can take some more proactive outreach on the matter? The notion of, you know, 300 by 300, you know, is just, let's put a mile marker out there. And I think Steve said it a couple of meetings ago, the notion of no property necessarily being off limits. So creating a program that says, you know, we had in that night, a couple of the individuals are here tonight, you know, one individual felt strongly about open space as is, you know, take it in nice and green and let the wildflowers grow and beautification, and that's good open space. Somebody else made a comment about parks and saying, well, I think that's the best kind of open space. And then somebody else commented about trails and say, well, what about trails and access? So some of what I think we tried to do is say, well, let's put an overarching structure that doesn't limit, that puts percentage goals that we can sort of target, you know, 20% as a target goal. I mean, as it is, you're talking about, the good news is a lot of land that's already preserved. I think it's a good start and foundation, particularly as it pertains to the National, excuse me, the Lands Trust. You know, they're professionals in this area, and one of the things... You know, they're professionals in this area, and, and one of the things that, when you think in terms of our solicitor and our engineer, you know, we rely on our professional consultants to advise us in such matters, and there's somebody, ultimately, they can advise us on such situations from a professional capacity, so we'd look at our reorganization meeting in January as an opportunity to appoint them in, in an official capacity that way. And I think that, again, I think that just sort of strengthens the conversation that we can have with residents. It's certainly a very personal decision if somebody decides they want to sell their land, or donate their land, or preserve their land in some way, and there's lots of ways to do it, but sometimes it's hard to figure out what's the right way, and how do you do it discreetly? A lot of residents don't want people to know that they might be looking at that type of a transaction with their estate, in terms of that. So I think we hit on a lot of those. We obviously didn't solve and answer every question in the presentation. I know, I'm going to comment on one more thing, and then I'll hand it over to the other two supervisors. One of the items that came up in our, in a meeting a couple of months ago, somebody talked about appointing a committee on something like that, and it, in the short run, we don't think that's the right direction. We think ultimately, there's legwork for us to do internally, and there's sort of a separation that we can do by making this a township function with our existing staff that's in place. But it's certainly, this isn't the end line, this is a starting point, but just to that point, we certainly gave some thought to that, and it seemed to make sense to, at least in the short run, that that's probably not the best mechanism to have in place. You know, you, when you're talking about land acquisition, you're going to have, that's not really the best mechanism, at least from our perspective, to get that conversation active and started. So, Steve or Lou, you either want to, want to make any comments?
Well, land preservations are, as Worcester's, you know, it's a heart and soul of our community, right? So, there's key pieces of property we want to save for future generations, so you can't save it all, but you try. So, there's always key pieces, and we're in the right direction at three hundred acre, three hundred, I mean, that's a neat idea. I hope we can pursue it and move forward. Steve?
Mr. Chairman, after seeing the presentation, all I can say is, wow. I, it, I'm, well, we've sat here for a long time in these meetings in the township, and the open space program in the past has been done under the cover of darkness and in a closet, and I think we're shining light on the, the program here now. I, I think it's being done professionally. When you have three supervisors sitting here that own and operate businesses, you understand how a business should be run, and this is the way it should be done. You include the township, the residents, open space is a passion within Worcester, and we certainly understand that. For years, we've all sat at the meetings, hearing the pleas from the people about open space. It really is a big issue. It makes Worcester different than other places, and I, I think the township's done a good job. I think the, the three hundred by three hundred's great. It gives it incentive to the people in township to get involved, and let them help us get that goal. It becomes a whole township issue, just not certain individuals that are doing it. Once again, a lot of it was done, I sat here as a board member sometimes, shaking my head, saying, where these discussions take place, would happen? You know, well, I won't, wouldn't go down there, but I, I think it's, it's, it's a real special moment, I think, for the residents of Worcester, seeing the way the program's going to be handled, the administration involved in it, and it being carried out. I, I think it really go into the legacy of Worcester Township, what it means to the people of having this, the properties preserved. So, I thank the staff for working with us. It's been a challenge for the past six, seven months, and I think, once again, having the three of us agree on this, working towards the same goals, and encouraging the township, professionals in the township to take the lead, rather than we being in, doing that, I, I think it, many, I guess it's a step really in the right direction. So, thank you for that.
I would agree. In terms of the mechanics, I don't know that we need to have any kind of emotion on it, it's just, it was a presentation ultimately, but it is part of the business meeting, but it's not, certainly, if folks want to make public, excuse me, make comments, it's our public comment, you're certainly welcome to do that. We're not going to, there's not a specific vote that we're taking on the item, we're just proceeding forward with it, and we'll move on to the next agenda item. Again, I'll reiterate, thank you to the staff for taking the time and effort to get all those pieces together, a great, great start. Our next item, which is even more exciting, is the 2022 budget, which we're going to hand over to Nicole, and the floor is yours.
Thank you. Okay, starting off, I'm going to talk about taxes. The budget includes no new taxes and no increase to existing taxes. Worcester Township's real estate tax rate is proposed to remain at one-twenty of one mil, which is presently the lowest municipal, municipal real estate tax rate in Montgomery County. For personnel, at this point in time, the Public Works Director does not believe an additional Public Works full-time laborer will be needed in the coming year. Our current complement of full and part-time employees will meet our needs in 2022. We will review this issue again as we prepare the budget for 2023. Likewise, an additional employee is not needed in the Administration Department, thanks in large measure to our staff, who have worked very hard to make operations more effective and efficient. But just like the number of employees in our Public Works Department, the number of employees in the Administration Department must be regularly assessed, so to ensure we are able to meet our obligations. Therefore, this complement may change over time. Under services, there is no substantive change proposed to township provided services in the coming year. So what we're doing today, we will continue to do tomorrow. For the general fund, as to the general fund, first and foremost, this is balanced. At this time, the EIT, our primary revenue, is projected to receive 2.86 million. The budget includes 2.72 million in EIT in 2022. The budget assumes real estate transfer taxes will remain steady in the coming year. The budget includes 375,000 in real estate transfer taxes in the coming year. 657,000 is projected for this year. This number assumes the transfers of existing residential properties, the transfer of 3.3 units per month at the reserve, and no transfers of commercial properties and larger tracts of land, which historically have occurred on an infrequent basis. As to expenditures, health insurance premiums were received earlier this week with a 1.6% increase. We are currently looking to lower premiums with rate stabilization funds, and are hopeful to keep the premiums at the level of 2018. Keep in mind that the premiums now paid are 10% below the actual premium billed in 2018, made possible by the use of rate stabilization dollars in the years since. The budget includes a 5% increase to our annual operating contribution to our volunteer fire department, to $167,000, and retains a capital contribution in the amount of $100,000. This number does not include the cost of workers' compensation coverage that is provided by the township, as is required by state law, nor does this include the number in Act 205 passed through aid to the Department's Relief Association, which is budgeted at approximately $81,000. In addition to providing additional financial support to our volunteer fire department, the township is working to support those employees who serve as volunteer firefighters during weekdays, when the department is in most need of help. For many years, the township has permitted its employees to respond to fire and other emergency calls during the workday. Two years ago, the township funded a monthly stipend for those who volunteer to answer the call for help, and the response has been tremendous. At this time, seven township employees serve as volunteer firefighters. The proposed 2022 budget includes the continuation of the monthly stipends. Lastly, the general fund will transfer dollars to the capital fund at the end of next year. This revenue will provide for needed capital projects, like the annual road program. The transfer amount will be refined in the coming weeks, as we adjust the budget to reflect receipt and expenditure estimates, but at this time, the transfer is projected to be around 1.6 million. Under capital fund, we will undertake sizable capital projects in the coming year. At the top of the list is the annual road program. The township will continue to provide an augmented resurfacing program, which will help keep our roads in good condition, maximizing the useful life of the network. The capital fund will provide 541,000 towards the road program, which, when coupled with dollars from our liquid fuels fund, will provide an $874,000 road program in 2022. And remember, this doesn't include soft costs like design, bidding, and inspections, or the many smaller fixes made by our Public Works Department throughout the year. In addition, the capital fund also funds three sizable culvert replacements on hollow, woodland, and Weber roads. Lastly, the capital fund will provide for the replacement of public works vehicles and equipment that have reached the end of their useful life, including the replacement of a 2008 dump truck, a 2008 sprayer spreader, and a 2012 gator. Under the sewer fund, in 2017, the township contracted with a new wastewater operator, and since this time, operations at our two wastewater plants and six pumping stations are running very well. As you recall, our contract provides for the direct billing of sludge removal, testing, and chemical purchase. To date, the arrangement has proven very effective in lowering these hefty expensive expenses. As to sewer rates, the budget presently includes a 0.5% increase to residential rates in 2022, which translates to approximately 22 cents per month increase for each home on the township system. A 0.5% increase to commercial sewer rates is also proposed. The sewer fund provides 608,000 for cap, capital improvements throughout the coming year. Just like our roadway network, the sanitary sewer system requires regular upkeep to maximize the useful life of its many components. This number does include ARPA-funded improvements to the Valley Green wastewater treatment facility. Under liquid fuels, annual increases in liquid fuels allocations under Act 89, the so-called gas bill, ended three years ago. Since this time, the township's annual allocation has decreased by 5%, when controlled for the roads added to our inventory. The estimated 2022 allocation was received earlier this month, and it is approximately 2% lower than when that received this year. For many municipalities, the annual liquid fuels allocation is the annual road maintenance budget. Our community does not adopt this approach. Worcester does not assume that the annual liquid fuels allocation is adequate to meet our real road maintenance needs, an approach that is more important now than ever before. As such, we budget an additional dollars in both general and capital fund to meet this obligation. We will therefore offset any decrease in liquid fuels funding with additional dollars through the capital fund. Next steps, the township will continue to monitor our receipts and expenditures and make adjustments to the budget we are warranted. We'll continue to add new numbers when new numbers are received. The budget will be presented again at the November 17 business meeting, at which the board will consider approval to advertise the proposed budget for the required public inspection period. The board will then consider the 2022 budget for adoption at its meeting in December. That's it.
Thank you, Nicole. Well done. A couple of points that I'll just highlight, in terms of that, if folks are looking and sort of following along the documentation that's in the packet on the budget. The budget is a year-round process. Tommy and his team get more excited about the budget than most other activities in the township, but it, it's a process that we take a lot of pride in for a couple of reasons. One is, obviously, fiscal management is a hugely important matter, not just for current expenditures, but just making sure we're setting up future boards and future township needs, sort of getting them all queued up long-term, and we have adequate resources. We're a very fortunate township in terms of the economic stability that our earned income tax provides for us, and that allows us to do a lot of really good every year. But ultimately, the process is something that is year-round. For those who were not here last month, we start, there's a first presentation of the budget in September. Today is, in essence, the second reading of that budget, with a few minor modifications from last month. Next month is the point where the board would then take a vote to say, do we want to advertise this, so that we can adopt in December? And that's sort of the process that we do every year, but there's sort of a year-round element with the budget. There are a couple of outliers you might look at if you do dig into the numbers. I know Jim likes to do, occasionally do that. I, I'll draw attention to the right-to-no item, because I'm going to steal Jim's thunder there. We, we're allocating $200 this year for right-to-no request, you know, an item that used to be... We're on track, I think that's the, the lowest number we've ever had, but this, that was a six-figure expense, you know, just a few years ago, for a variety of reasons. And, you know, we, we're grateful to Bob when he needs to get involved, and we're grateful that he doesn't need to get involved quite as often as they used to. There's some revenue numbers that we received, if you were at our meeting a couple of months ago, we had to, we had to, I don't know, was it ARP? I don't know what they were.
ARPA.
ARP, so, we got funds from the government that were tied to COVID-19 relief, it, it was a little north of half a million dollars. If you look in, you might see a line item that looks out of whack, it's because we're allocating for that half a million, I think it was 545,000 on one of the funds. I think it went to the sewer fund, but I don't remember exactly. And then we, next year, have budgeted for the other half, you know, so there's another sort of outlier there for several hundred thousand dollars that is coming under a federal entitlement program. We, you'll also see some revenue line items, there have been a lot of tapping fees tied to, whether it's Center Square Golf Course, which is the toll project, or the Ryan Homes that are being built on Whitehall Estates. You know, you wind up with an influx of some revenue due to all those tapping fees. But generally, our revenue sources have been pretty static and stable, and we do our best to sort of keep the expenses in line, while also trying to provide a lot of good services there. But we're not voting on it tonight, but ultimately, it was a presentation. Does any other board member just want to make any general comment regarding the budget before we move on?
Just a short comment, Mr. Lolo, I think it's really good with the legal bills regarding your right to know, but our citizens of Worcester are still paying it to the school board. I, I think when you run for office, you have an obligation to the residents, to the township, that when they take their time, when you go, you knock on someone's door and say, hey, listen, I'm running for an office, would you vote for me? I think we have a duty to answer the question, and I'll make this public comment, I'm appalled at our school board, that they sit there like a bunch of dummies and not answer questions. It's an embarrassment to me, as a resident of the township, as a grandparent of the township, of kids in the school district. It, it's just appalling, the legal bills that are happening there, and it's our money, it's our tax dollars, and these people don't have the conscience to sit there and step to the plate and answer a question. It's an embarrassment. So, once again, I think, when you have a board with a non-agenda items, I, I shouldn't say non-agenda, with, with, with issues, we don't have issues that we're trying to portray or push on the public. We sit here with the taxpayers in mind as to how we answer the questions, and answer the questions. If someone comes, like the fellow today with the burning question, Mr. Lolo said, hey, we don't have all the answers, we don't know the other side of the story, but we'll look into it, and we'll get back to them. I think that's what you have to do. I, I think you have an obligation to the people that we represent in the township to do that. So, I guess, the township manager, solicitor, I, I guess a job well done. So, I, I thank you for that.
Fair enough. Lou, you want to add anything on the budget?
I'd like to add that I think Nicole did a great presentation. That was a long, a lot of work, and you got through that pretty well, so I got to give you one for that. So, that's what I'd like to say.
So you're not going to give it back to Tommy next year? He doesn't get it.
I, I just think that's a lot of work, a lot of reading and a lot of work, so, I, my hat's off to you.
Fair enough. All right, so moving forward, looks like we have some bids and awards that we need to allocate. We'll start with the bid ratification, which is going to be a motive, motion to ratify a bid for winter materials. Tommy, is that you?
It is. Each year, we enter into a contract to purchase winter Each year, we enter into a contract to purchase winter materials. Again, this year, the bid received by the Montgomery County Consortium is the lowest of the two primary bids out there, the second being CoStarz. Hat Field Borough led the consortium bid effort this year. That Borough Council approved a bid for materials at the price of $58.33 per ton delivered. And we're asking the board tonight to ratify that bid award and approve our participation in the consortium.
Thank you, Tommy. How many years have we sort of participated in this way? I know at least it's been several that I can remember. Is there...
Yeah, it goes back at least three or four years. What we do is we wait until we see the number from the consortium and the number from the CoStarz bid, and we'll go to the lowest. And in recent time, the lowest has been the consortium.
Fair enough. We're going to hope for a mild winter, but obviously, we're going to need to ratify this particular bid. Does somebody want to make a motion on that, or does anyone have any comments?
Mr. Chairman, I have a question about it first. I'll ask you, maybe you can ask the manager. Is there any chance that the items for the winter materials are sitting in a ship on the West Coast, waiting to come in?
No, they're here.
I mean, everything else in America is sitting out there, it seems. But I know some people say that we don't need these products. America would have to deal without it, but I think we need to solve for a roads. So, as long as it's not sitting on the ship...
Yeah, and it's also important to note, a few years ago, we purchased, we constructed the salt storage building. That's fully stocked now with 450 tons. The budget provides for the purchase of another 625 tons. So, the first 450 should get us to the first several storms.
Thank you.
Any question, any additional questions? If not, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we do bid ratification for a bid for winter materials.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Our next bid award is going to be a motion to award a bid for the sale of a 1994 Volvo Michigan loader. So, at 27 years, I guess it's reached end of life.
Does it have chips? Does it run on chips or not?
Old chips.
Old chips.
Potato.
So, what are the details on this, Tommy?
We let it for a bid, and the high bidder is... Paul Lanigan, Eagleville, Pennsylvania. The amount of the high bid, $35,200.
What was this priced new?
This price new was $82,793. So, we are recapturing about 42% of the purchase price.
27 years later, 42%? That's pretty good retention. It's a Volvo, they never die. You're right. So, this seems pretty straightforward. Somebody just needs to make a motion so we can sell it, right?
Correct.
Okay.
I make a motion that we accept a bid award for Volvo Michigan Loader for $35,200.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Next bid item is similar.
Next item let for bid is a 2009 Ford F-250. High bidder, bid amount, $18,100. The original purchase price was $28,981. So, we're capturing about 62% of the purchase price.
Fair enough. Anyone want to make a motion, or anyone have any questions on that?
I'll make a motion that we accept a bid award for the 2009 F-250 truck for $18,100.
I think if we wait another month or so, it'll be probably worth $50,000. I mean, you can't find anything. Once again, it goes back to the chips we're all waiting for. I know Burgie's has a list of about 365 people waiting for pickup trucks. So, okay, I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment on the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next up is the 2008 John Deere 997 mower.
Also has reached the end of its useful life. The high bidder, bid amount, $3,900. Original purchase price, $12,745. So, we capture about 30%.
Tommy, do we replace these items as...
We do. So, this was replaced through a purchase this year.
Gotcha.
And that was about $22,000.
Okay.
Make a motion to accept a bid award for the 2008 John Deere 997 mower, $3,900.
I'll second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is for the brick pavers. I guess we wound up with some extra brick pavers on the project in front of Community Hall. Is that correct?
This is leftover pavers from the Heeburn Park Pavilion.
Gotcha.
We completed some time ago. Also, some were used at Nike Park recently. And the high bid amount here is, if I recall, $1,360?
$1350, yes, sir.
Make a motion to accept a bid award for the brick pavers, $1350.
I'll second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any public comment regarding the motion on the floor? Seeing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item is other business. Does any board member wish to bring any other business before the board tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, next up, we have public comment. Does anybody wish to make any additional public comment to the board tonight? Seeing none? Nope.
George Hiltner, owner of property at 2980 Township Line Road.
Okay.
Question for the board. I'm in the process of trying to sell this property. The septic system has failed. My understanding is that Montgomery County is the authority having jurisdiction, and I need to go get permitting from them. And I would need to know, is there something required by the township? Because I'm being told by my buyers that they call the township, and the township says they know nothing about this, and it's not approved, and the location is not acceptable. And I've already got $45,000 invested in this. I hired an engineering firm. I've had the property surveyed. I have a permit from the county. I have an approved system signed off by the county. And now I'm losing buyers. So, I got a big quagmire I need to figure out how to get through this.
Okay, George, I honestly do not have an answer for... So, you...
I have an answer.
Okay.
I'm sorry, your name again is?
George Hittner.
Okay, sure. The permitting of on-lot sewer is provided by the Montgomery County Health Department. Sometimes, we get notice of things that they approve after the fact. For several years now, we have asked Montgomery County Health Department to notify us when a system is proposed to be installed. Because while the county approves the system, the township code has some requirements with regards to location and setbacks. But the way it's done now, we get notice after the fact. So, what we have done is sent out to residents when we get a piece of paper from the county saying, "Apologize for the inconvenience. The county won't make this common sense accommodation." If whatever is proposed and approved by the county is in the front yard or located within 30 feet of a property line, you have to come before the Board of Supervisors. What we receive from the county after the permit's been issued is just that, the permit. It doesn't even come with a plan. For this property, I've never received a piece of paper from the county. The first time I saw the system being installed was just the other day. I don't even know what kind of system it is. This is challenging because the Valley Forge Road Court Improvement Project has widening at your property's frontage, and it looks to be very close to where the septic system is, which is a problem. What type of system do you have? Do you have an individual, small-flow facility?
It's a mini, it's a micro mound.
Okay. I asked about the other one because there's a tri-party agreement that is needed for the small-flow facility. So, that it's not a small-flow facility is a good thing. But again, the township code says it can't be in the front yard, and your system is in the front yard. And it's certainly within 30 feet of a property line.
Could you tell me when the county code where that is located? Because I've looked at the code today to try to find it.
Sure, I can send it to you. Yeah.
So, now what do I do?
What we've asked folks is to come before the board and get the required approvals. Also, grading permits needed for what you did. So, you submit a grading permit application that shows what was proposed, and the township engineer will review. Primarily, what he's doing is to make sure that there's no other place in the property where this thing could have worked. If where it's located in the front yard is the only practical place because of soil conditions, the township engineer at a board meeting will tell the board, "This is the only place that works." But as I sit here today, I still don't have anything from the county.
I... Well, I don't know why, because I have a copy here to Worcester Township. I mean, I don't have a copy, obviously, that you got. But September 16, this was issued, and it says copied Worcester Township.
Now, I follow up every single one with a letter to the affected property owner saying, "I apologize for the inconvenience, but you got to contact us." Every single one I follow up. I've never received anything from the property.
So, can we call the county to get a copy of whatever copy we need in order to get the process started?
Well, you should have a copy of your plan.
I have everything right here. I have a plan, I have a design, I have everything that you called for.
Yeah, so what's needed is you have to file with us a grading permit application. You provide us with a copy of your plan. That will go to the township engineer for review. We'll let the township engineer know that this is already in the ground. And then he'll report back to me, and then if we have to go to the board for relief, we go to the board.
Okay, so in terms of the mechanics, does he need to come to the township tomorrow? Can he... Is it an email? Is it a conversation? Like, I just want to make sure that we get it started, whatever we need to have.
You can download a copy of our grading permit application on the website, complete it, and then deliver that to the township building with the permit fee, and we'll process it.
Let me say something else. If you have it in here, and you don't know how to fill the thing out, if I wouldn't know how to fill it out, ask your engineer to fill out the grading permit. Get it into Tommy. He'll get ahold of Joe Nolan, you know, our township engineer, and analyze it and let you know what you have to do. We have these things that come before the board regularly where there's difficulties with the location, and the board considers it, and then grants a waiver where required. So, I think what you need to do is give the manager the document that he's asked for. If you need help with it, have your engineer take a look at it, maybe fill that out, and you'll be on your way.
So, now I have to wait for another board meeting, which is another month?
Yeah, because the board doesn't have anything in front of it to act on. There's no plan. What happens with these cases is the engineer takes a look at it. He makes a recommendation to the board that put it up on the screen, and they act on it at a meeting.
So, we've had several, George, over the last, I don't know, six months, a year?
They happen rather commonly here in the years.
Right.
Well, I can tell you, I'm pretty angry. I had an agreement of sale. The septic failed. I followed what I was told to follow by an engineering company. I paid them $4,000. I paid $40,000 to install the system. I've got something on here that's copied to you guys. I got nothing back from anybody saying something's wrong. My buyer walked. Now I'm sitting here, and now I got to wait for another month to approve for another buyer. And then I got... So, I've lost all summer now of people coming to look at my property. It's a vacant property. I got to come down, I got to mow the grass, I'm going to have to take care of the snow. I'm going to have to put heating oil in it. I'm going to have to take it off the market until we get it resolved somehow. And now I'm faced with, if I have to move it?
Well, we can't make that determination, George, until we inspect it. I mean, that's... We can't tell you tonight that it's okay. I mean, that's... We don't have any authority to do that.
I understand that. When I looked at the code, today, what I looked at, now there again, your code's probably pretty big. I don't know. But I looked at septic systems. It said Montgomery County, you got to get an application from Montgomery County. And it would seem to me that if that's you're telling me that's to do, I followed what I was supposed to do. I went to Montgomery County. If you guys have an issue talking with Montgomery County, or Montgomery County is talking to you, that shouldn't be my issue. Finally, I'm caught in the middle here.
What we have asked Montgomery County to do again and again, the moment a township resident drops off a permit application, notify us. We'll reach out, we'll do all the work. We're getting permits that have been in queue at the county, being reviewed for months after it's been approved, and then we're notified.
Who is your engineer, sir?
All county associates.
We've worked with them before.
Quite a bit.
They certainly should know that they shouldn't be digging in the ground.
They should know what your requirements are. I mean, they surveyed the property.
They should, they know how to do this.
Yeah, the grading permit's not new. I mean, that's been in place for 15 years, almost 15 years. You know, those items aren't new items that we just changed, you know, in the last couple of months. I mean, they certainly should have known to contact on, even just, let's say they didn't know the elements from the county. The grading permit certainly would have triggered a conversation, and they certainly should have known to do that. That's not a new element. But certainly, we can look to move as quickly as we can as soon as we have the information. Like, we won't be the delay. I mean, we just need to have the documents so that we can take care of what we need to.
For many, many years, the code has said the system can't be in the front yard. It can't be closer than 30 feet to any property line. Just a few months ago, to make it a little easier, the Board of Supervisors amended that. It gave the township engineer the discretion to approve anything that is in the front yard or more than 10 feet from a property line. You'll need to make a return trip to the Board of Supervisors only if the system is within 10 feet of a property line. But just driving by your property, it looks like it's within 10 feet of a property line. I can't say for sure until I get a plan.
So, if it's... When I give you the plan?
When I get the grading permit application and the plan, if it is, if it's more than 10 feet from a property line, now it's just going to the township engineer as soon as he reviews it and says, "I agree, this is the only place on the property where it makes sense to put a system." We're good. He can give you that approval now under the revised code, the change we made earlier this year. But if it's in 10 feet of the property line, the code is clear. It's got to come to the board.
Is that something that could be expedited?
Yep, absolutely.
George, just to follow up that, as I said before, we really sit here. We all live in a township. We all have properties. We hate to put someone off, especially in trying to sell a property. A lot of this change regarding sewers, the Hickory Hill property, a person went and installed a sewer system in their front yard. If you drive up to Hickory Hill, it looks like a ski mountain. It must be up, well, it's almost up to the second floor. It's in a development house with 25 or 30 homes in the development, and this mound is almost the second floor. They did it without the township approval. But how, you know, we sat there, it's not right, it's a problem. But the township engineer said, "Yeah, where else are they going to put it? It's the only place of perks." And I think we've gone through, in the last year, 12 or 15 of these where the only place it goes is in the front yard. So, we said, "Hey, listen, let's try to change the ordinances. Let's look at it, and if that's where it has to go, it has to go." We have to be fair with people. We just can't ask you to pump your sewer system for the next 15 years. The costs are outrageous. So, we really try to work with the residents. As Mr. Ryan said, we will try to expedite it to get it done as fast as possible. We have to make sure it falls within the parameters that we can't be held on or called on the carpet in the future. So, we need the plan. What the county did, the miscommunication or lack of communication with the township, obviously, it's not our fault, but Mr. Ryan didn't know anything about it, nothing to follow up on it until we have a piece of paper. And we certainly try to get the things done as soon as possible. So, we will work as fast as we can to alleviate your problems.
Thank you.
Okay, does anybody else have any public comment for the board tonight? Joe? Joe?
I have an X, you're going to have to leave until I spell it all out.
You just put Joe P.?
I don't.
You just put Joe P.
I just put an X there. The X place.
Want to use another pen?
I think I spelled it right. The only reason why I'm speaking is because of the last speaker. And the reason why I'm bringing it up, because I feel that when I was here in 2010, and I brought up about sewers, and I brought up about other things, the problem that I'm seeing, and maybe it's being solved now, I don't know. But you have no problem having township employees or representatives of the township go and ask for roofing permits, various other things. And when you see somebody pulling the sewer out of a property, it's a big job. And how somebody isn't going to that property and saying, "Hey, look, I don't have anything. Well, the county doesn't talk to us." Well, you know, we've had people that have been on people's property, marking property up to try to figure out where sewer lines are and everything else, or where everything else is. Bottom line here is, I think we need to, as a township, start looking. If you see a big project, such as a septic system failing, and people bringing things out, somebody needs to talk to those people. Whether it's any entity of township needs to do it. And the problem is, is in the past, like Steve said earlier, everything was under the cloak of darkness. Well, and then, when they caught you, they wanted to add a whole bunch of stuff in. So if we're going to change the chapter, I think if we have people going around and seeing something, maybe opening a hand and saying, "Okay." The reason why I bring up about roofing, I just got into the township and had a roofer redo my house. All the permits were supposedly done. I had somebody knocking on my front door, asking me something. Now, do I think the policy of having somebody there and making sure I was getting a fair shake, or it was done to code? Absolutely. But the bottom line is, back then, it was, "Oh, this is a new resident, let's show them how we are here in Warsester." And the bottom line is, they didn't like the response that they got back. So I don't think we have to have an adversarial relationship here in Warsester to take care of basic things, because the bottom line is, what happens if something goes wrong on that property? And what happens if people get sick? Who's responsible? Too many legal fees. We just said we wanted to cut down our legal fees. Knocking on somebody's door and saying, "Hey, we don't have paperwork. When did you file this?" Might be a better idea. So that's the only thing that I wanted to bring up. So I appreciate your time.
Thank you, Joe. We appreciate the public comment. Is there any additional public comment for the board tonight? Jim?
Just to clarify something, we don't have too many legal fees here. With a $700 right-to-know budget for right-to-know legal, I don't think we're trying to reduce our fees. Our fees are like next to nothing. I think what you guys are talking about is the school district spending a million dollars in a year for right-to-know, amongst other things. The total legal bill's close to two for whatever else they're doing. So, you know, this township, when it comes to the management of legal fees under Bob Brant and Tommy, is second to none. Nothing to change. 700 bucks. And that may be high, because you have a competent right-to-know officer who responds within five days, gives you records, and doesn't redact them. I got a request, I did a right-to-know request over at the school district for all their DEI information, okay? Emails, board superintendent, Bruce Campbell, his CV. I did that right-to-know request in November of last year. I still don't have the information, okay? I wrote Tommy an email to get all of the township's invoices for legal fees, okay? Because the school district makes me wait six months, and then I get a black piece of paper. The same day, I got 200 pages of invoices with no redactions on them. Nothing. So what we've got here right now, what comes to right-to-know, is by far the best in the county, the most transparent in the county. We cannot afford to be like the school board. You know, you guys, having a nice conversation with the gentleman, back, forth, dialogue, answering his questions. Well, over there, no questions, no dialogue, and guess what? They even curse at you. Profanity being used on home and school moms over there. We cannot afford to have that over here, okay? So I guess my point is, I think what's going on with you three and the board in general, things are about as good as they've ever been here, okay? 18 million bucks in the bank, most of which we can use for open space. Correct me if I'm wrong, Tommy. $2.5 million in grants for open space, over 200 acres of permanent preservation of parks and farmland. This open space fund, the lowest real estate tax in Montgomery County. More important to me is an apolitical board. Apolitical. You don't have an agenda. You're not forcing anything on anybody. You're doing your job trying to help the people of the township. And we got accessibility with videotaping all the meetings. I mean, you talk about complete transparency, you know, it's night and day. I've been coming here for, you know, like 20 years, and where it was then and where it is now are like two different galaxies. That's how far away we are from where we were and where we are. And I wouldn't change a thing. Thanks.
Thank you, Jim. Appreciate the comments. Certainly, Joe, we, always rooms for improvement, too. You know, there's things that aren't working perfectly. We can certainly continue to look at everything and make sure that we're trying to do the best job we can.
You guys are part of the board from my head, though?
Fair enough.
What did you say?
We weren't part of the board when they put the roof. You come to my neighborhood, they're putting on a new roof, it seems like every two days. Somebody hooked into something with hail, and everybody thinks they're getting a new roof. I am not getting a new roof, by the way. But that aside, since we have no additional public comment, I think, we're good? We're good? Motion to adjourn, and thank you for coming.